Greetings and welcome. This is November 5th, 2024.
Yeah, thank you. All these high-tech gadgets. Welcome. This is the November 5th, 2024 Yucca Valley Town Council meeting. It's starting at 6 o'clock, just slightly after. And let's call to order, and roll call, please.
Council members Abel.
Here.
Dennison.
Here.
Drows.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Here. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Remain standing. I think we have Lisa Edwards from the Church of Latter-day Saints, and she is the Communications Council Chair, I believe, right?
Yes.
Please lead us in vocation.
Our dear, kind, gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful that the City Council allows us to do prayers at this meeting. I'd like to thank them for all of their dedication, their hard work, and their love for our city, for the countless hours and care that they give to love and serve those in our community, and really grateful for them. We're so grateful for the opportunity to live in a land where we can exercise our right to vote, to pray. There's still time. I hope that those that still haven't made it will make it. I pray, especially in our community here, that no matter the outcome, that we will have peace and respect and love towards one another, that we can come together and not be divisive. And I pray that we can really work together as a community. I pray for those that might be attending this meeting with concerns, that they will be resolved in a fashion that they feel peace about. To also thank our Sheriff's Department, our fire departments, and all those who look after us. Pray for their safety and for all the service that they give us. And to pray for the government of our nation, for our state, for our county, for our local area, that decisions made will be in our best interest in the long run and that they will make righteous decisions. And we're just grateful that we can live in this community that's it's been here a long time. It's grown, and I'm grateful I've been able to live here all these years and raise my family. And I'm grateful that when we travel outside of our area, that we recognize the peace that's here without the traffic and the smog and some of the things going on in the bigger cities. They really truly are blessed. And we ask that this meeting goes well. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, have a seat. Okay, are there any presentations or introductions, recognitions today? Okay. Let's get an approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Dennison will second.
Okay, approved and seconded.
Council members Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Drows.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. Moving on to consent agenda, items one through seventeen. All items on the consent agenda are routine matters or formal documents covering previous town council instructions. Items are enacted by one motion and a second without separate discussion unless a member of the town council or town staff requests a dialogue on a specific item at the beginning of the meeting. Requests for public comment on the consent agenda items should be filed with the town clerk. So, is is there any comments from the public on the consent agenda? Do I have a suggestion of motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda as presented, items one through seventeen, for approval.
Do I have a second? Okay.
Second.
Council members Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Drows.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. All righty, moving on to item number eighteen. Let's get there. Okay, public hearings, environmental assessment, EA 08-24 Development Code Amendment, DCA 2024 Land Use Compliance Review Ordinance Number and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yucca Valley, California, amending Title IX, Yucca Valley Development Code, Chapter 9.66, Section 9.66.010, to include landscape plan and landscape and irrigation review. Please lead us through that. Technical charge, jargon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You are welcome for that fun title.
Yeah.
The recommendation is that the Town Council finds that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3, which states that activity is covered by the general rule that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. The activity is not subject to SEQA. And that the Town Council introduces the ordinance amending Sections 9.66.010D and 9.66.010E of Title IX Development Code of the Town of Yucca Valley to include landscape plan and landscape and irrigation review as a requirement in ordinance of the Town of Yuck-- sorry, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yucca Valley, California, amending Title IX Yucca Valley Development Code, Chapter 9.66, Section 9.66.010, to include landscape plan and landscape and irrigation review. So a quick summary of the history of this one. The Planning Commission reviewed the differences in requirements of all of our various land use applications, so land use compliance review, site plan review, and conditional use permit requirements meetings of February 13, 2024, April 2024, May 2024. The Planning Commission was basically looking to see if the requirements for those permit applications were too burdensome or if there's a way to streamline things, make things easier, make things better, et cetera. The Planning Commission found that for land use compliance review, that the existing requirements are not overly burdensome. And at their May 14, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 24-02, recommending the addition of landscape review to be included in the land use compliance review applications. As you could see further down, Town Council received the recommendation and on June 4, 2024, directed staff to prepare an ordinance for a public hearing, and here we are.
Okay.
Consistent with Town Council direction of June 4, 2024, the proposed updates to the ordinance moves the language for additional landscaping from Section 9.66.010E, Standards Not Required, to Section 9.66.010D, Standards That Are Required. So the effect of this ordinance is that projects going through the land use compliance review will comply with the development code. And at certain thresholds, the state model water efficient landscape ordinance, which I'll refer to as the state ordinance, standards for landscaping and irrigation review. So we have been talking to the State Department of Water Resources to get clarification on exactly when these standards are required for landscape and irrigation review. There's some questions from the Planning Commission, so we just wanted to make sure we had everything exactly right, straight from the state's mouth. So if there's gonna be 500 square feet or more of new landscaping at a commercial business in this case, it requires, can review under that, the state ordinance. So kind of additional supplemental requirements for commercial projects to review landscape and irrigation, water use, stuff like that. And also, if you're rehabilitating 2,500 square feet of existing landscape area, so let's say there is landscaping there at some point in the past, it's become in a state of disrepair, and they want to rehabilitate it, put new landscaping in, but landscaping already existed at some point, that would be the trigger for existing landscaping. And the size of the structure, so if the structure is being enlarged 100 square feet or 100,000 square feet, it does not affect the requirements for landscape review. So the bold section at the bottom, this is what landscape, sorry, land use compliance review applications are required to comply with. So when someone wants to do a small addition to a commercial project, we'll review it for commercial design guidelines, make sure it's not going to be, you know, neon, green, lit, super bright. Make sure they have adequate parking, make sure they don't have crazy signage that doesn't comply with our regulations, dedications for easements, making sure all the roadways are dedicated, and now landscaping. And you'll see that the Planning Commission, to make it simpler for applicants and to kind of make it more streamlined, so they don't necessarily have to go through the state ordinance unless they want to. They cap the requirements for landscape plans, so if it's new landscaping, we require up to 499 square feet, 500 being the threshold for the state ordinance. If it's rehabilitated landscaping, it's capped at 2,499 square feet. Of course, they can choose to go over, but they would then trigger that state ordinance. The remaining landscape area can be covered with decorative rock, things of that nature, to fill out the landscape area but not necessarily trigger irrigation standards. So the recommendation has been read into the record, that the Town Council finds that projects exempt from SEQA and introduces the ordinance as previously read into the record. And we can answer questions following the public hearing.
So let's, do we open a public, yeah, let's go. So this is the opening of a public hearing on the environmental assessment EA 0824 for the Development Code Amendment. Is there anybody in the public interested in speaking on this? Anybody online? No? Okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing. I do have a question. So this requirement will be imposed on all new residential constructions, or this is only commercial?
This is only for small expansions of use for commercial projects.
Commercial projects. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have one question. From my research, it looks like the Planning Commission was unanimous on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Let's have a vote. I need a motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the item for agenda, item number eighteen, as presented by staff.
I will second item eighteen.
Council members Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Drows.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Public hearing, environmental assessment, EA 1024 Development Code Amendment, DCA 03-24. Authority table ordinance number, I guess it's not there. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yucca Valley, California, amending Chapter 9.60, Permit Procedures, General Provisions, Providing Procedures to Process Land Use Entitlements and Development Proposals in Any Land Use Zoning Districts. Can you continue with that? Let us know what's going on.
The recommendation is that the Town Council finds that the ordinance is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to state SEQA guidelines, as it is not a project and has no potential to result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change to environment pursuant to Section 153878. That the Town Council introduced the ordinance amending Sections 9.60.030, Review Authority for Land Use and Zoning Decisions, Table 4-1, Review Authority of Title IX Development Code of the Town of-- of the Yucca Valley Municipal Code, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yucca Valley, California, amending Chapter 9.60, Permit Procedures, General Provisions, Providing Procedures to Process Land Use Entitlements and Development Proposals in Any Land Use Zoning Districts.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
I got a little, I'll make it quick, but I got a couple more, a couple slides. So Chapter 9.60 establishes permit procedures. Within that chapter is an authority table. It needs to be updated periodically to account for new permits and various levels of permits. For example, the recent temporary special event permit has several levels, 1, 2, 3, 4, and the review authority is different for those various levels. This is just an example of what the table looks like. So as you could see, if you're going to do a zone change, the director would recommend, the Planning Commission would review and recommend, and the council would ultimately make the decision. And then there is a secondary table that has been included to address things that would be recommended by the town engineer and/or PRCC. So there's a few applications that are slightly different, where the review authority is different than what's currently in the code. And with that, the recommendation is the Town Council finds that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA, introduces the ordinance as previously read into the record, and we can answer questions after public comment.
Okay. I thought we were gonna get away easy there, but, okay, anybody in the public have any comments? Seeing none, none online? All right, really entertain a motion? Any questions? I'm sorry. Any questions from the council? No?
No.
No one has questions. I'd like to move the item forward.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right.
Council members Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Dennison, yes.
Drows.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. We're on to item number twenty, Department Reports. Yucca Valley Sports Complex Project Update. Let's hear some good news. What's that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is the Yucca Valley Sports Complex Master Plan. And the recommendation before you tonight is the Town Council receive and file report from BMLA Landscape Architects on the Yucca Valley Sports Complex Project, provide input and comments as desired, and approve the draft Yucca Valley Sports Complex Master Plan. Just to give a review of this, on November 7 of 2023, the Town Council authorized the release of the Requested Proposal for the Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facility Master Plan. And on December 5, 2023, the Town Council awarded the Professional Design Agreement for the project in the amount of $118,094. I have the consultant staff here. They will come into the podium and introduce themselves to go through the presentation. At the end of their presentation, there is a short video that we'd like to show you after that, and then we can continue with that item afterward.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for listening to our presentation. And those that have been involved throughout the last few months that are here and not present. I think we've came up with a successful plan. Again, I'm Steve Sherrill with BMLA Landscape Architecture. I have, I'm the VP of Operations. Ivan Velasquez, he's our senior project manager, who's been mainly involved with the project, running it through. I have a slide that we can go to. So a brief history on how, what the research that we had to get to this point. The video's about two minutes. I'll try to be quick on this part of it, but we utilize the Parks Master Plan that was available from 2018, the Prop 68 Brim Expansion Grant Outreach Application, the 2021, 2020, 2021 Survey and Community Input on Different Elements that the community gave at that stage. We attended the Sports Council meeting back in March of '24. We had virtual meetings with many of the stakeholders between the sports leagues back in March and April, and met multiple times with town representatives to come up with a plan. And we presented to the PRCC group with favorable response, as well as a community meeting. The two major items that came up through the whole process, actually, between the sports leagues, the stakeholders and the public, was circulation and parking. That was kind of the two major issues. And what we were able to do is come up with some solutions for that, and we've increased the parking count up by 261 stalls. That's about a 75% increase on that, and that includes a piece of property on the west side of Palm. And just to jump into the design, but we, the way we kind of looked at this actually was, it's like a puzzle with some pieces that were missing, and we were trying to fill in that, the rest of the pieces. The aquatic facility, kind of in the northwest, northeast part of the project, is underway. Everybody's very familiar with that, and that was the first piece that kind of landed in there. You know, Boys and Girls Club, the community center is there, so we're filling in all these little gaps. And some of the key elements that came in was the circulation, parking, connection between the north and south areas, kind of a cul-de-sac improvement for safety, minimize cars that were parking and taking up space, some fitness, some outdoor activities, sports for kids, pedestrians, some hiking, and then obviously the aquatic part of it. So this is an overall view, kind of looking out over the Boys and Girls Club into, you can see the soccer field on the north. And we try to lay out those fields as the current league lays those fields out, so they can get a feel like it's actually how they currently use that field, so we're not interrupting any of their space. This is an overall plan. We have enlargements that we'll get into after this, but the upper right photo is-- I forget, is this a pointer? Yeah, so that upper right photo here is shot from about here, looking down. This middle photo is looking out over the Little League fields. This one here is looking through this, what we call the sports plaza, past the Boys and Girls Club. So what we had focused on was this piece here, that we'll call it the Little League Plaza and the connectivity to the wash. We'll call this the Sports Plaza, and we'll get into that. This is the new, large part of the new parking. We've focused on some circulation issues in this section and some connection pieces and some fitness pieces as well, with kind of a drop-off zone that could be shared between the Boys and Girls Club as well as parents here at the Little League Field that can hang out and watch Little League from the outfield. This is an enlargement of the Sports Plaza, so this is the existing Boys and Girls Club. One of the things talked about was cars that were parking and taking up space in the cul-de-sac for and interrupting circulation for kid drop-off. So we're suggesting like a limited parking zone there. The idea of the city logo painted in really brings back the arts and culture that's within the town. Kind of a shaded drop-off zone for the kids while they're waiting for the bus. And this is kind of looking down through the Sports Plaza as you come through here, and they, sorry, through this section just north of the Boys and Girls Parking Lot. And the idea is that this could be used as parking. It's closed off here with some larger kind of art-type elements that you kind of see in this zone. And it could actually be used and blocked off at this stage and used as maybe a farmer's market, some other type of community activities that's outside of the traditional sports that we see. And these are just some inspiration imagery down below on how we kind of, you know, the inspiration to get to these imagery, to these images. This is the Sports Plaza. Again, this is the Boys and Girls Club. We had suggested maybe some type of mural. You could commission a local artist to go through that, and this shows what it could look like as a kind of this overflow kind of parking plaza, but the trees in there are actually flush with the ground, so it's like this urban kind of setting. Or this one showcases it maybe more like a farmer's market condition. And this is at the end of the cul-de-sac and where the, out by the Little League, and maybe some enhanced crossings to go from the south end where the Little League is, up to the north end to the Aquatic Center. Some fun paving just to highlight some crossing pedestrians are coming through. This is the Little League Plaza and reconfigured parking lot. Circulation was an issue, so now you have ways to come in and circulate through that parking lot and be able to exit. There's landscape. This would definitely fall within the Muello ordinance that we're talking about. Some of the issues here was like solar parking structures, so you can actually provide solar to maybe some EV stations. This enhanced Little League Plaza, right now it's really all dirt and just the field, so we're suggesting coming through and some benches, some tree covers, shade cells, like a play area that, sort of for the parents with younger children, they have a place to play while their other kids are in the, playing in the sports league. This facility, this section here is the Field of Dreams, a little fitness station. This is kind of just a view through that plaza, what it could feel like with some shade trees and lighting. Some of the shade cells, these are popular over their bleachers that protect the the parents and family from foul balls if they're coming in, so that's kind of, it gives you the shade as well as some protection, and again, some inspirational imagery. Oops. This is a phasing plan that's tied into a cost estimate that was in your overall, the 700-page packet that you'd received. This was through multiple discussions with staff on how to break these phases up on, you know, the existing phase would be like, say, your Aquatic Center, which is kind of a 1A, that's in the work now, but how this could be constructed in different phases depending on funding and availability. You could do multiple phases in one shot, but this is the Palm Avenue improvements in that parking lot. So we're just kind of looking at how everything could come together over the course of multiple years. If there's any questions, I could answer those now, or I could just jump into the video. I think it really gives you a feel of walking through the space and what you can expect from that, if you'd like to see the video first.
Okay, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Go to the video.
This is starting through the Little League Plaza, walking up past the concession building towards the north parking area. The raised planters, benches, shade trees, decomposed granite, boulders. The picnic stations, as now this is like a sports-themed totlot for the younger kids to be playing nearby the parents, so they can actually watch the kids and the baseball players. Now we're heading towards the T-ball field. There's the shade cell over the bleachers. This is now heading up just west of the parking lot underneath these shade canopies that can house solar. And now you're starting to see the Field of Dreams with some fitness station off to the right. That was like a circulation path through the, through the park as well. The community center, our enhanced little pedestrian crossing. Coming up to the end of the cul-de-sac with the town logo. This is the shared kind of picnic slash Boys and Girls Club picnic area. This is the shared kind of picnic/Boys and Girls Club picnic area. Some larger art pottery type pieces at the end of the cul-de-sac to keep circulation and anybody driving through that section to keep everybody safe. And now we're coming through the sports plaza, and we modeled this as a farmer's market condition. And we spin up and see the Boys and Girls Club logo, or a mural, back towards the field. So that's our master plan.
Well, those AI presentations are just incredible.
That took quite a few dollars to put it together, but we were pretty proud of that one. That was fun.
Yeah, it was very pretty.
Any questions?
Go through the slide.
Oh, one more slide that Alex wanted to touch on this part.
So, Mayor and Council, we wanted to highlight that is, the fees that was paid for the study and for the master plan was funded by Major Y. That is who paid for this, and we are appreciative for that. So the recommendation before you tonight is that to receive and file the report on the Yucca Valley Sports Master Project, provide input and comments as desired, and approve the draft Yucca Valley Sports Complex Master Plan. That concludes the staff report, and we'll be more than happy to ask any questions after public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the audience? Is there any audience? Oh, no. Anybody online? No? Okay. So back to the council, any questions? It looks beautiful. Yeah?
Beautiful project. I appreciate the presentation and the virtual walkthrough is, is really nice. I think always my biggest concern of that was always the safety of the project and of the residents and those that use it. We had started to mitigate those concerns of going from the north side to the south side of different activities and kids just going to see their friends or their family, whatever. And so we were able to do that by terminating Little League Drive there. And so that kind of helped prevent traffic. You know, cars not paying attention, kids not paying attention, and possible injuries. I'm looking at the same thing for mitigating concerns that would happen on Palm Avenue with the west parking area. How, what do you have as far as helping to control that for a safe crossing in an area with a street that runs some sunny slope down to the highway?
I think there's, we didn't really address that specifically, but multiple approaches could happen where there could be a flashing light if you're crossing at that section, because it's set up at that intersection. It could be like a speed table to force people to slow down. Even in your daily traffic, you're going to have to slow down in that location, and it'll train people coming through versus just having a speed bump. You know, just the flashing lights at the, at the crosswalk condition. I think, we didn't really touch on it here, but we looked at monumentation at that key intersection, so you could see that coming down, or I guess coming up Palm. And I think just kind of different visual measures that kind of highlight that there's this traffic, pedestrian traffic that's going to be crossing. So that link between the north-south part of the field, that was actually something they wanted to bring that connection back. And by addressing the cul-de-sac and the sports plaza, we feel like that's a safe piece, but I think Palm, just maybe a little deeper study on how we can tackle that piece.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that is one of the priority pieces of it, is to make sure that, you know, that safety is in place. Because I do think it's a great magnet for people to go to, and the additional, what, 260, I believe it was, parking spaces are hugely valuable there. So it'll be used, and just sometimes, you know, kids are in a hurry, go, go play with their friends.
Yeah, and I know like in some beach communities, on the very busy, like a four-lane street going back and forth, that's, that's their solution, is a button that you click and some lights flash. Even in the city of Corona, where we are on, on Main Street, it's not even a, well, it's fairly busy now, but it's flashing lights that come up and highlight that somebody's crossing, but they wait until the cars stop. It doesn't always happen, but there's different measures that the traffic engineers have come up with.
Well, I appreciate those suggestions and look forward to more on it.
Okay.
Mayor Proton?
I appreciate Councilmember Dennison's comment. I think that's really important. I didn't think of that. But otherwise, everything looks really incredible. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, I really liked the look of that. I think it's responsive to what we've been talking about and, and moving towards. So good presentation. I like the phases, but I don't like the phase. I like that you phased it so that we can do it piece by piece, but nothing's ever quick enough. So I would, I would like to, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to see us make a commitment to address these phases, especially if we have Measure Y to help fund it, that we, that we can prioritize this project and get to where we've envisioned, you know, before too many years go by, that we could just kind of get there and get this to completion. But thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, I was curious a little bit about the phasing, how that was put together. I guess we could look at that at a later date, exactly which phase is most important and critical. Was there some thought process of what it was? Was it due to financial, like some of these are less financially, or what was the thought process between the suggested phases?
Well, initially, we came up with just something that was more of the efficiency of the project, and trying not to put a priority over one sports league over the other. And so our initial thing was, let's close out the Aquatic Center. And so we had that lower, that southerly parking lot as a part of a 1A, just to close that out, but then realized that's actually already incorporated in that plan. So the next thing was Palm, right? That's a part of our master plan. TK Engineers did a conceptual grading study and drainage report, pretty extensive, not as colorful as our exhibits, but it's very important. So that ended up being an early phase, which included that westerly parking, because that's the, you didn't really want to do all this other work and then tear it all up and people couldn't get to the park. And then we just started to piece it out. So like, Little League Plaza is probably a chunk, you know, the sports plaza north of the Boys and Girls Club. So we were trying to break them out into pieces. We would love to see them all linked together and built at one time as well. Realistically, that hasn't happened. There are some repetitive fees that happen. The more you break phases into more phases, like mobilization and other things that come from the general contractors. So there is an element of savings there, but it's, when you start to look at millions of dollars, it's probably a drop in the bucket on some of that. So we had smaller phases, but after further discussion, we broke it into more pieces. But it allows you to combine some. And I'm not sure, like, you know, if you let Little League or soccer or, which way are you going first? I think parking and the circulation is one of the key elements as well, so.
Yeah, I would agree. The parking, circulation, all those things, put those up there at the priority. The most used portion, again, and, and the one that's just desperately needing, updating, is the Little League Plaza area. We get a lot of bang for our buck there. The improvements with the shade, the seating areas, the safety of, of being able to access the fields looked fantastic. So that, that would be a phase I would definitely want to see right up there towards the beginning. But I understand that, you know, the highway improvements, the road improvements, those types of things. So you guys are the expert in that area, but it is very great presentation. There'll be some things, like, you know, I saw a lot of turf. So, you know, I would suggest, you know, that we use artificial turf or whatever. I, I just want us to not have a bunch of, like, just dirt, because it doesn't look finished. It blows onto, you know, the fields, it blows onto the sidewalks, all that kind of stuff. But I also don't want to put natural grass in areas that aren't necessary, and have our crew, that's already working to the maximum, having to deal with all those maintenance issues. The number of trees is absolutely beautiful, but that number of trees also has other things that come with it, which is maintaining, raking, and all those things. But shade is very important, and I think the aesthetics that you, as you presented, were fantastic. I've seen other presentations given to us from people out of the area, and it doesn't look like Yucca Valley. It looks like a Orange County kind of a concept. This one really fits our park, and it's very classy, and it's practical. And so I appreciate all the hard work, and we're very pleased that we, we selected you guys to put it together for us.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm very pleased with the presentation. It does look like Yucca Valley, and I can't wait to see it in real life. Do I have, oh, just, okay. Review and file. Okay, we filing it, huh? Okay. Item number...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was awesome. Item number 21, BRTAC Agreement: Procurement of Recovered Organic Waste Products.
Good evening, man. Honorable Mayor and Council. The item before you is to approve an agreement with BRTAC to provide the procurement of recovered organic waste products. The recommendation is that the Town Council approve an agreement with BRTAC Waste and Recycling Services to provide the procurement of recovered organic waste products on behalf of the town as required by SB 1383, to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents and a form approved by the town attorney and make any non-substantive changes. And three, to amend the fiscal year 2425 general fund budget to appropriate an additional $20,000 in professional services to the solid waste division to accommodate the annual procurement costs as identified in Exhibit A. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention that since the posting of the agenda, we did have a minor revision to the agreement. So in front of you, you each should have a redlined version of the new agreement showing the changes, and there's also some at the front table for the public as well. But I wanted to give you a little bit of background. As most everybody knows what SB 1383 is at this point, but just a brief little history, it's legislation from the state of California that sets statewide reduction targets for organics reduction, and requires every city and county to implement organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. The law aims to address climate change by reducing the state's methane emissions that comes from the landfills. The extensive SB 1383 legislation not only required the town to implement organics recycling for residents and for businesses, but it also required the town and other cities to establish commercial edible food recovery programs, an organic waste procurement program, extensive education outreach programs, and also provide and keep record-keeping of all of these items as well. So part of the 1383 regulations is that the jurisdictions are required to annually procure a quantity of recovered organic waste products that meets or exceeds the annual target set by CalRecycle. This target is calculated by multiplying the per capita procurement target, which is .08 tons per resident, by the number of residents in the town, and that is determined by the California Department of Finance. So according to these calculations, CalRecycle has determined that the town is required to procure 1,786 tons of recovered organic waste products on an annual basis. The products that can be used to meet the organic waste procurement target is compost, mulch, renewable gas from an on-vessel digestion facility or electric, excuse me, electricity produced by, from a biomass conversion. So staff recommends entering into an agreement with BRTAC to act as a direct service provider, as defined by the regulations, to annually procure on the town's behalf a sufficient quantity of recovered organic waste product to meet the town's procurement target. BRTAC will charge the town $17 a ton for this service. If the agreement is approved, the town and BRTAC have agreed that BRTAC will procure compost as the allowable recovered organic waste product to meet the town's procurement target. And according to the regulations, each of the four procurement items that I mentioned before, they all are calculated a little bit differently to equal one ton of organic waste. So CalRecycle calculates that .58 tons of compost equals one ton of recovered organic waste. So therefore, in order to meet the required procurement target, the town would need to procure 1,036 tons of compost per year. Now, just to throw a little more math at you, there is a legislation in place right now, AB 1985, that has it so that the California jurisdictions are only required to procure 65% of their procurement target for the year 2024. So therefore, the town would need to procure this year in 2024, 673 tons of compost. So according to the, according to the agreement, if that is charged at $17 per ton, the cost for the town would be that we have to procure $11,441 worth of compost. In 2025, if BRTAC's rate stays at the $17 per ton, then town is going to need to process and purchase the full 1,036 tons of compost, and that would be at a rate of $17,612 for the year. So staff recommends contracting directly with BRTAC to act as the direct service provider, as the most efficient way for the town to meet CalRecycle's procurement target for the procurement of the town's recovered organic waste products. What we've decided for the fiscal, let me turn my page here. I can't get this separated. The fiscal impact is that the $11,441 for 2024 will be paid from the town's general fund solid waste division, and the cost for 2025 and beyond would need to be included in the solid waste rates to be reviewed during budget impacts for the fiscal year 2526 budget reviews. So again, the recommended action is to approve the agreement with BRTAC to provide the procurement of recovered organic waste products on behalf of the town, authorize the town manager to sign all related documents, and to also amend the fiscal year 2425 general fund budget and appropriate an additional $20,000 in professional services to accommodate the annual procurement costs as identified in Exhibit A. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the public that has any questions? Anybody online? Okay. Anybody here have questions?
Okay, there's some gaps in my understanding here. How much compost do we, do we need or do we use currently in, in the town?
We, right now, the town, our Parks Department, we purchase about 40 yards of compost for the entire year.
Forty yards.
So, yeah, and to calculate that into tons, I, I'm not 100% sure what the yardage is into tonnage. Shane, do you know?
Oh, that's, that's okay.
It's not anywhere near, though, the 1,700 tons that we have to procure for the year.
It was somewhere around five, between five and 10 tons.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Okay, so that gets to my, my point of, what are we going to do with the rest of it? What happens?
So we need a commercial farm.
Yeah, so that has been actually a source of contention by a lot of the local jurisdictions, especially those of us in desert and rural communities. Right now, the state has it so that it's a per capita rate that's statewide. So it's .08 per resident statewide, no matter where you are. No matter if you're out here in the desert where we don't hardly, you know, have any vegetation, we can't use that much compost, you know, if our life depended on it, versus somewhere down in the city, you know, LA, maybe up north where they have a lot more trees and, you know, stuff like that, and a lot more vegetation. So there has been some discussion that there are, you know, hopefully some legislation will be brought forward to change that straight across the board per capita rate to maybe something more like based upon your actual organics generation. So, you know, what we generate here is about what we should be able to have to, you know, purchase in order to help the state meet its mandates. So for now, what the plan is, is BRTAC, since we have to purchase as much in order to comply with SB 1383, BRTAC will do it on our behalf, and they will then give it, and you can't, we can't sell it either. So we have to give it to farmers or whoever can use it in the local area. Usually, most likely going to be down the hill, or maybe they may have to ship it to more of the Central Valley.
Since this program has started, is, excuse me, is there, is there any indication whether the quality of this, of this compost is as good as compost previous, that was produced previous to this program?
I, I don't know off the top of my head about the, you know, what the quality is versus what it used to be, but I do know that there are some regulations in place by the composting facilities, and if they are, you know, saying that it's an organic compost, meaning it's very clean, then they have to meet certain requirements in order to, you know, basically post it that way, or to give it away that way. But as far as, I don't know how the difference is. I know I have Clara on the, on the Zoom call from BRTAC. Clara, do you know or have any information on the difference between the compost that it used to be and what it is now, since we've been doing organics recycling?
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, actually. Thank you for having us. Clara Berry here with Town of Yucca Valley. Yes, compost is, is quite one of the programs. Um, yes, compost is, is quite one of the programs, in addition, as Jessica has mentioned. Our, our facilities are certified organic facilities. As far as the question related to the product as it was then is now, we are still in, in the early phases of what we are recovering from, like, your jurisdiction to see what that would actually change as far as the product. At the end goal of what we collect, our, our material is certified organic, and it is, um, provided to our local facilities. I hope that sheds a little bit more light on your question.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, so other cities got to the party before us on this. Uh, is this, um, is this issue we're talking about, having, having too much, is that something that's fairly common, or, or were unique in that?
No, it's, it's common. I mean, it, cause it's based on the, um, per ca-, you know, it's based on the residential population. So imagine cities like LA. What theirs is, you know, their population times .08. I mean, they're, they're having to purchase million, you know, like a million tons or something, I mean, over the high, high hundreds of thousands. So it, it is tough, and that's what cities have been talking and telling CalRecycle, and also the haulers as well, because we're all involved in this together, and it's just, but it's, it's in the mandates, we have to do it, and we as a town have to do it now because we implemented SB 1383 at the beginning of this year. So we have to comply with getting ours together before the end of this year, um, otherwise we won't have satisfied what our requirements are. One other thing I also wanted to bring to the council's attention is, we're working with BRTAC to come up with another way to possibly, um, I guess kind of get rid of some of this compost, would be, um, possibly having it available for free pickup for residents at our community cleanup events. So we have another one that's gonna be scheduled in the spring. We don't have those dates yet. In fact, Clara and I are gonna meet on that in a couple of weeks and clarify what our next year's dates are gonna be for our events. And then, um, we are looking at our spring event to not only be a community cleanup event, but also a shredding event, and also free compost. So we're trying to combine everything together, and then we could probably have free compost pickup twice a year, um, at our community cleanup events at the transfer station.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping us compliant on this, and I'm sure you give us updates as we learn a little bit more about what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's very frustrating because the residents have to pay for the increase of, uh, waste pickup, and now the residents have to pay for us to get rid of it, and to give it away for free. So the residents get hit twice, um, with this legislation. I guess we can't ship it up to Sacramento and drop it off for them, uh, and donate it to their gardens, but, um, my, my question is, um, again, I'm glad you were talking about the free, uh, compost. I know that, uh, BRTAC is gracious in letting people come and drop off, um, electronics, uh, at their facility, so it'd be great if people could come by and get compost. It would be nice to have it more than twice a year because different times of the year are planting seasons, and people need it at different times. So if we could work out some type of an agreement there, uh, because the residents paid for it, so let them benefit by having some of those for their own gardens would be great. Um, we only use five to 10 tons for the town. How much does the school district might need? I mean, they use a lot of, uh, grass fields and so forth, so, uh, maybe this is a question for BRTAC, but if we're giving it away, can we make sure and give it away to our school district? Can we make sure and give it to a nonprofit in the area? Uh, give it to people that are residents or at least, uh, supported, uh, out there in Landers or, and, and, and Joshua Tree and those types of things. Uh, anywhere where there's parks, anywhere there's grass, um, where compost could be used, I'd like to see it donated here locally, if at all possible, uh, but yet keep the cost down. So, um, is tho- are those possibilities, uh, and do we get a list of who received our free compost, um, to evaluate?
I think staff, this is the first year that we're doing this, uh, Councilmember Abel, so we'll look at those options. Uh, nothing is free, right? So when we talk about processing compost, that's not done up here, that's done, uh, down at a different facility. Your primary cost is gonna be transport cost. So if we're gi- if we're giving it away, somebody's gonna have to cover that cost to come back up here. So likely, there will still be a cost.
Right.
Whether that's picked up there and, and, and provided, whether BRTAC provides it to a farm, or whether they bring it up here and then we give it away, those costs are still out there. So staff and, uh, we'll be evaluating all the different kind of iterations of what this might look like over time.
Yeah, obviously, this is the emergency Band-Aid that we need to do right away and, and take care of it, but I'd like to look into all kinds of options and, uh, how we can help the residents.
Correct, and that's one of the reasons that we structured the, uh, MOU with BRTAC to be a one-year term, so that it gives us an opportunity to revisit all of the, kind of the, the mechanics of how it's gonna work in future years.
Is there any way that the, uh, compost or the, uh, other byproducts can be used spread on our sandy roads or our washed-out areas? Or, I mean, you could use tons and tons of the stuff, and some of the wash is where it gets washed away after a good rainstorm. Would that be an acceptable use?
We'll add that to the list of things that we'll look at.
I don't know. We can convert our, okay. Well, it will enhance the soil, and you'll get better plant retention of the soil. Okay, at any rate, thank you.
Mayor, can I, I'd want to comment, please. Um, so, you know, we, we have spoken earlier this evening about, you know, conservation and landscaping, and, and I believe us, for the most part, are pretty good about it. You know, we fill up a trash bag of weeds that grow. We hate weeds. As you know, composting can produce weeds. So we have a struggle in the park with, you know, invasive species coming in the area. The composting, it seems like per capita, uh, the program that they're using is certainly not anything that's well thought out, because what we end up doing is we accept additional tonnage from other areas that are producing it. Where I don't think we're producing in the volumes of the other areas, the lush areas of Riverside County, Orange County, LA County, those areas are overbuilt and, uh, overlandscaped. And so that's going somewhere, and with the per capita cost, they're making out and we're losing out. And I just wanted to make a statement of that because I don't think it's fair to apply those broad rules. Uh, everyone, even at the state, will say it, one size doesn't fit all. A few years ago, when they were trying to make a moratorium on water around here, they said that everyone had to reduce their consumption by, I believe it was 20%. Well, we were already very, very frugal. Um, we couldn't even move 4% without people making cuts in their actual health. So, um, I think it's inappropriate the way that they're doing it, uh, 100, you know, 1,700 tons is quite a bit, and there is a huge cost to it also, that's, I think, falsely being applied to our residents in the community. I love BRTAC, they're a great hauler, they're, they're complying with, with the state mandate as we are, um, and we're all just, uh, stuck in this system that was applied too early, I believe, uh, and not being thought through. But thank you for your work and your presentation tonight.
Yep, okay. Thank you, we're gonna...
I'll move the item if there's no further discussion.
Dennison will second.
Councilmembers Abel?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Drows?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo?
Yes. Uh, item number 22, town project number 4100, Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facilities Project Phase One, Resolution Number 24XX, Budget Amendment, Award of Construction Contract.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the item, the recommendation before you tonight. Sorry. Okay, here we go. Um, the recommendation before you tonight is for the Town Council to adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2425 budget for a total project budget of $2,925,000 by appropriating 1.325 million from SRF 2022 Debt Service Fund 2022, sorry, 222, and to ARB Funds 574, project number 4100, Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facilities Project, and approve the award of a construction contract with Van Engineering, Inc., in the amount of 2.544825 to construct Yucca Valley Community Center Facility, uh, Athletic Facility, and then authorize construction, construction contingency in the amount of $245,170, and inspection cost in the total amount of 2.925 million, and authorize the mayor, town manager, and town attorney to execute the agreement, and authorize the town manager or designate to expand contingency funds if necessary for a project's completion. So prior review of this project, of this project is, on December 5 of 2023, the Town Council authorized the release of request proposal for the Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facility Master Plan. On February 20, 2024, the Town Council awarded a professional service agreement for the Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facility Master Plan to RHA Landscape Architects Planners, Inc., in the amount of $229,840. And on September 17, 2024, the Town Council adopted Resolution Number 24-33, approving the plan specification for project number 4100, Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facilities Project Phase One, and authorize the town clerk to advertise and receive bids. So just to give you an overview of what is the project consists of, the project is, consists of 14 court of pickleball, um, pickleball courts, including one that is, I'm gonna try to point to it, including one that is, will be a master or for tournament-sized court, and then the plaza that is, we have that is including, uh, including a restroom and some shade structures for people to enjoy, and of course, the, um, ma- future of the, uh, basketball court that we have, um, in that area. And we mentioned that is the, um, the, uh, skate park is part of this, but it is a phase and a project in its own. So that is what this will include, also the work on the parking area expanded, so we can have enough parking for the, um, uh, for the, uh, the usage of the, of the pickleball court. So we structured the, we structured the, um, the plans or the specification or the, as Phase One, where we're gonna be building eight pickleball courts with the parking, and then Phase Two will be constructing the plaza with the shade structures, which is including restroom, and then co- the, the, Phase Three will be to construct the rest of the pickleball courts, which is six of them, and then Phase Four will be the demolition and reconstruction of the basketball courts. We received two bids on this project. Uh, Van Engineering was the lowest apparent bidder at AU, so we, to go back, we did structure the, um, the bid is to have, the base bid will be the construction of the eight courts plus the parking, and then the alternate bid one, just to see what we can get, is to construct the restroom with the, um, with the shade structures. So with that being said, we received the bids as, you can see, for the best bid, the, the lowest bidder bought the best ba- base bid, he bid at 2.544825 with the alternate bid cost of 1.229100. So based on the, uh, and the advertisement for the project, that the project will be, um, awarded on a base bid, uh, format, so we are, um, confident that is the lowest bidder is apparent, and it's, uh, a good bid to go with. So we reviewed the packages that were submitted, and we confirmed that is Van Engineering, Inc., of Wildomar, California, is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with a total base bid of amount of 2.544825, and with the anticipated six-month construction timeline, if awarded by the Town Council, construction work is anticipated to be completed by September of 2025, depending on the receipt of the required permitting from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. So what is the fiscal, that is the fiscal impact, as you can see, county ARBA funds in the amount of 1.6 that was received for this project, and the debt services, uh, proceed, uh, contribute 1.325 million to the project for a total project of 2.925, uh, $2,925,000. So recommendation before you tonight, to adopt the resolution amending the 2024-25 budget for a total project budget of 2.95, 2.925, by appropriating 1.325 million from SRF 2022 Debt Service Fund 2022, to ARBA Funds 574, project number 4100, Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facilities Project, approve the award of a construction contract with Van Engineering, Inc., in the amount of 2.544825 to construct Yucca Valley Community Center Athletic Facility, authorize a construction, uh, a construction, construction contingency in the amount of $245,170, and inspection cost in a total project of 2.2, 2.925 million, and authorize the mayor, town manager, town attorney to execute the agreement, and authorize the town manager or designate to expand contingency funds if necessary, if projects, for, for project completion. That concludes staff report, and we'll be happy to answer any questions after public comments.
Okay, is there anybody in the public wishing to comment? Anybody online? Okay, back to the council. What do we think? Go ahead, start down there.
I'm glad we're moving along on this, I, I, I think we have to, but, um, uh, it's kind of, uh, disheartening that, that we can't do the whole project like we, um, started out thinking. One thing that concerns me a lot is the, uh, restroom facilities, if, um, what's that, 1.2 million more if we were to, were to include that?
1.2, yeah, 1.25 approximately, that's not including contingency.
Yeah, um, so that's, that's, I know that's a lot of money, and that would impact our ability to do, to do other projects that we have in mind, but, um, I, I just don't like the idea of putting a whole lot of people out there with no restroom facility nearby, the softball field and the, and the building here at the closest, and that means people patronizing, people watching are gonna have to cross over the parking areas to get to restroom facilities. So, uh, I wish there was a way that we could, uh, incorporate restrooms and, and that shade structure area, uh, in this, but maybe at the very least, we get some classy porta-potties out there to, for the interim or something, but I think we need to accommodate, uh, the activity that we anticipate out there. If we don't do that, people are gonna be finding other places to take care of that business, and, uh, we probably don't want that either. So, um, anyway, I like, I, I like that we're moving along on it, I think it's good, I wish we could do more with, uh, uh, the funds that we're spending, but that's the way it is, so thanks for the report.
Alex, what is the, uh, time, timeline on completion, and at completion, what will happen to the pickleball courts that have been, uh, changed over at the, uh, the other park?
So the completion of this project will depend at what the permitting that we will receive from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, there is about, um, 70 something, if I count correctly, Joshua trees that need to be removed for, in the, in order for this project to be completed. So we are, so we are applying for the permit, and it depends on when they can answer us. Um, the project, the ARBA funding that we have on this project, we must complete it this project before the end of next year, completely, so we are working toward that, hopefully we can get that. So we give six months after the, we get the permits from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, we have six months for them to complete the project.
And then remind me, how many, uh, pickleball courts we have now at the other park?
The other park, I believe we have four, and that is, after we build this one, we will turn ba- these back to tennis courts.
Right, so, uh, we're losing four, we're gaining eight, so we, we got a net gain of four, and then we have one other that's not really the, the best, but it is a pickleball court over at, at Paradise.
Yes.
Okay, and then the additional 1,00325 or whatever that number was, that was just for a restroom and shade? That wasn't for the additional courts?
No, that is only for the restroom and the shade structure, of course, the pad that goes into it and other, uh, fencing and stuff like that, so it's 1.325.
Okay, well, you know, obviously, the parking lot needs, definitely needs to be done, it should be, we need it now, so we'll just need even more. Uh, I'm glad to see we'll have eight courts put in, and we'll see again how... Uh, I'm glad to see we'll have eight courts put in and we'll see again how much it's used and we'll see if, uh, if pickleball continues to be as popular as now or if it's a phase, uh, we'll see how that continues to go. Uh, the lighting that was there, and I know that they went through the, all the fencing and all those kinds of things and you got a lot of feedback, so the design was sort of looked at with Parks and Recreation and with, uh, community, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, it's great that we're gonna move forward with it and I, I'm glad that we're having it down here at the community center, uh, and I think it'll be a really nice addition, uh, additional outdoor activity for everyone to, to, uh, to use. So looking forward to the project moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. All set?
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Um, the restroom with the shade, one-point-two-million, what if we got rid of the shade and just had the restroom, would that lower the cost very much?
It does.
What's that?
It does, it will, it will lower the cost, yes.
Yeah, I wonder how much though? Wonder if we could find out?
Maybe if we, we can look at the bid and see what is the cost because it's broken up in there.
What did the restrooms cost that we put in Old Town?
So let me, uh, that was purchased by, uh, the town. I believe we paid two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand for that.
Is there the possibility of doing a duplicate of that?
Um, there is always a possibility, um, to do whatever is needed, but just to give you an idea of the, um, for the, um, the, the bid came at, for the prefabricated restroom building at three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand?
That's not far off.
No, that's just the purchase cost.
Yes, the purchase, yeah.
That is. Sewer connections and water lines and all of those types of things, so that's not, you're not gonna go from one-point-three-million to three-hundred-thousand dollars. That's not going to happen. So likely you're looking more at purchase and installation of a restroom building, you're probably in the six-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range.
Okay. Wow. All right, well, we're gonna have to start finding some sources of revenue.
Mayor, if I might, just add one additional comment, um, just remembering the funding source, a good portion of this, about half of it, a little bit more than half is being funded by the county. So we went out of our way to engage the county and county representation to let them know when we went out to bid, what the phasing was, and then the proposal that you have before you this evening and, uh, provided opportunity for the county to weigh in and provide any input, uh, any modification requests or any additional funding. Uh, they were comfortable with the recommendation that's before you tonight.
Okay. All right. So even if we came up with extra money for, they wouldn't have anything to match us with at this time or to help us in that way?
We didn't get into that level of detail. We offered that as an alternative for the recommendation this evening and they were not interested in that.
Okay, so we gotta deal with what we got. All right? Anybody else? You okay, Dennison?
Yes.
Councilmember Dennison, okay. All right, so let's have a motion and a...
I'll move the item.
Okay.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmembers Abel?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Drows?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo?
Yes. All righty, and that brings us to the conclusion of that. Uh, do we have any future agenda items?
We have one more item.
Oh, did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry.
Important.
I did. Cooperative Agreement number twenty-five-dash-one-zero-zero-three-one-nine-one with San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, the SBCTA, of the widening of State Route sixty-two, Sage Avenue to Airway Avenue from four to six travel lanes and signal modification improvements.
Um, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, the recommendation before you tonight that the town council approve the cooperative agreement number twenty-five-dash-one-zero-zero-three-one-nine-one with San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, known as SBCTA, for a project initiation document and project approval and environmental document phases of the State Route sixty-two widening project from Sage Avenue to Airway Avenue, and authorize the mayor, town manager, and town attorney to sign all documents necessary to implement the agreement. Um, just to, um, that the planned improvement under this agreement include widening of, say, you know, State Route sixty-two, uh, from four lane to six lanes, including intersection and traffic signal modifications between Sage Avenue and Airway Avenue. The project implements town policy which was established in nineteen ninety-five with adoption of the town's first general plan and circulation element which identified the need to, uh, travel lanes to State Route sixty-two. The project is eligible for the Morango Basin Major Local Highway Projects Program and is included in the ten-year delivery plan as approved by the SBCTA Board of Directors in December for two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the Morango Basin SubArea Representatives, the Mountain Desert Policy Committee, and SBCTA Board of Directors recognize this is a priority regional project for the subarea. And due to the complexity of this project and town's limited number of engineering, staffing, team members, um, we have, you know, we would like to, um, contract with SBCTA to deliver these project, this project for us. So the agreement delineates roles, responsibilities, and funding commitments relative to the project management, PID and TAD activities on this project, of this project. The agreement also sets forth the terms and conditions between the town and San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, uh, to perform the project initiation document and project approval and environmental document, which is the first documents that we need to get before we start into the design of this project. Um, design and construction phases will be coming, um, later after we finish with this phase. Um, SBCTA will provide project management services estimated at two-hundred-thousand dollars for the project and understand it is the town's sole responsibility to pay one-hundred percent of the actual SBCTA project management costs in accordance with SBCTA Measure I Strategic Plan Policy. One-hundred percent of costs shall be funded with town development impact fees for only the project management portion and for these phases of the project. Reminder, uh, the remainder of funding for this phase of the project is identified as being paid by SBCTA in the amount of not to exceed two million dollars. Uh, funding for the future phases of the project will be subject to the provisions of the SBCTA Measure I twenty-two, twenty-ten, twenty-four Strategic Plan and Policy. So again, the recommendation before you tonight that the town council approve the cooperative agreement number twenty-five-dash-one-zero-zero-three-one-nine-one with SBCTA for project initiation document and project approval and environmental document phases of the State Route sixty-two widening project from Sage to Airway, and authorize the mayor, town manager, and town attorney to sign all documents necessary to implement this agreement. That concludes staff report, will be happy to answer any question following public comments.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public wishing to comment? Anybody online? All right. Any conversation?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I just wanna say I'm impressed how long this stretch of highway is that's being widened. Usually it's, it seems like they're shorter stretches, so that's really pretty incredible. And, um, I wanna ask you, the outer highway and the median, I mean, I was trying to look at the map, it was pretty small, but the outer highways will not be touched, correct?
In some areas, the outer highway will be reduced, yes.
But it will still exist?
It depend on the right of way, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I guess that's it. And then so I guess the median between the highway and the outer highway, that will definitely be impacted. Okay.
Yeah, most likely, yes.
Yeah.
At the design, we'll find out about all of that.
And that was one of staff's conversations with, S- town staff's conversations with SBCTA staff of how much flexibility we have in the design, design being the widths. Um, and so that will be part of our conversations ongoing with them and that will be, I think, a critical component of some of our presentations to the town council on what is that going to look like and how is that going to function for this community in the future. So that's a very, it's a, that's a very legitimate question between what I refer to as the outer highway median islands, the outer highways in the Southern California Edison high-voltage overhead power line poles. Those constraints are huge and that will be an ongoing analysis as this project moves forward.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, okay.
Yeah, um, the ten-year, um, uh, program on that, I don't know, the ten-year window that you, you talked about, does that mean this project would be delivered by two thousand and thirty-one? Is that, is that?
Possible.
Possible. Oh, that's the target?
I'm not gonna be here with the possible.
Okay.
So i- if you look in, unpack at page seven forty-three this evening, just for the project initiation document and environmental approval, you're looking at a period of two years. And that's not even the design of the project. So you, so that's essentially your environmental review. Then you have design. As you start to move forward into that design, before you can move into construction, you have to be working with the utility companies for utility relocation. For Edison to relocate those high-voltage overhead lines, you may be looking at a, pull a number out of the air, three-year process of, of us to initiate it, here's where we think they have to go, then Edison has to evaluate it, they have to determine where they have to go, then they have to figure out when they're gonna do the work. So is a ten-year time period reasonable for this magnitude of project? Yes, it is, uh, and maybe a little bit longer.
But at least we, we initiated it at this point of time.
That's what we're doing right now is we're initiating the initiation.
We're initiating that and then what Shane has just, just, uh, explained that is we'll go through the, um, uh, design and then that will address all of that.
Okay, right, I guess we gotta start somewhere. Okay.
We have to start somewhere.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, uh, council member Schooler said a great, you have to start somewhere and being the busiest intersection in the entire Morongo Basin of our two major highways, uh, it is a good place to start. It, we know it is being the most congestive and, um, we've talked about it many times before, I think from, uh, two forty-seven to Warren Vista originally, but now we're kind of centralizing approaching two forty-seven from both directions, which is a good start. You know, as a, as vice chair for the SBCTA currently, um, we've talked about this for a long time. All the time I've been on SBCTA, uh, I've always brought this issue up of our highways in our community and how they're getting, uh, uh, more compacted with, uh, traffic and pedestrian and other types of transportation too, but that's because of the increase in tourism for the area, not so much the residents. So we're being impacted here. Uh, there's, uh, great teamwork with SBCTA and I'm very happy to say that, um, the entire board is very cooperative and participative, you know, participating in this project. So they realize through, uh, the Mountain Desert Policy Committee meeting and then, of course, the board, which I'll be at tomorrow, um, and I'll personally thank everyone for getting us to this point again and continue to move forward.
So anybody wanna make a motion?
Dennison will move the item, uh, agenda item number twenty-three.
And I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
Councilmember Schooler, I'm sorry, councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Drows?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo?
Yes. Okay, now we are at future agenda items. Anybody have anything? No? Now is the time we take for public comment. Uh, the town council takes this time to consider your comments on behalf of concerns which are not on the agenda. When you are called to speak, please state your name and community of residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Inappropriate behavior which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting will result in forfeiture of your public comment privilege. The town council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussion items not on the printed agenda. So is there anybody in the public wishing to comment? There's nobody online. So we're back to the staff reports and comments.
We'll keep our comments very brief tonight. Um, I'd just like Sue to talk a little bit about the two items, or two major items that we have coming up this week.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Curtis. Just a note that we had, uh, successful Halloween programs. We signed out seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight free wristbands for our Halloween Spooktacular and had about a thousand in attendance with over eighty in our costume contest. And the seniors always have fun with Halloween. They had a full house of one-hundred-and-twenty-four participants at their Halloween party over there at senior centers. Really, really fun. Uh, upcoming this weekend, we have the Yaca Valley Film Festival kicks off on Friday with the red carpet opening at five-thirty, uh, meet and greet at six o'clock, uh, Mayor's welcome, thank you, at six-thirty, and, um, and then launching into a really great set of, uh, short films on Friday night. Then, of course, the film festival continues on Saturday and Sunday. All of the details at yacavalleymoviefestival.com. Admission is free. Uh, and then we continue on Monday, November eleventh, with our Morongo Basin Veterans Tribute. As you know, that tribute, uh, alternates back and forth between us and Twenty-Nine Pumps. This is our year to host and so we will have a, uh, Veterans Breakfast at the Yaca Valley Senior Center for veterans and their families. Our, uh, community center, um, military and public safety equipment display, veterans recognition, color guard, community barbecue starts at ten, the formal ceremony will start at eleven, and then we'll have lunch afterwards and we'll have musical entertainment and a lot of fun, uh, on Monday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments?
Planning Commission meeting next Tuesday, Commission will be hopefully finalizing their discussion on commercial sidewalk displays, which was one of the policy direction items from the town council to the Planning Commission. Commercial sidewalk displays and commercial special events are scheduled to return to the town council for a public hearing at your meeting of January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, and that will complete the commission's work on the current items as directed by the town council.
Thank you for that, Shane. Uh, Mayor and Council, as you know, we have two measures on the ballot this evening. Polls are getting ready to close in about thirty minutes. Uh, we're very grateful for the community's, uh, efforts in understanding what they were voting on. Uh, we had two of our council members on the ballot unopposed, so congratulations to both. Um, just, uh, in terms of housekeeping, uh, we do have a council meeting scheduled for November nineteenth. Um, certification of the election, uh, will occur after our first meeting in December is scheduled, so likely December third, we will be dark and the certification of the election will occur at the same time that council reorganizes and has the state of the town on December seventeenth. So that's the calendar as it's laid out for November and December. Completes, uh, staff comments this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All righty. Councilmember, uh, reports and comments. Uh, councilmember Abel? Nothing? Okay. Councilmember Dennison? Uh, councilmember Schooler?
Well, just briefly, I want to say that I attended the museum, uh, anniversary party and, uh, that was spectacular. I thought they did such a good job doing that, uh, putting that together and, and also I keep hearing good things about the senior center, uh, operation and events over there, so great job to the community services staff and look forward to the film festival, Veterans Tribute. Busy group, everything's high quality, good events. Thanks.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Drows?
Um, I'm just, I wanna say I'm excited about the highway widening, but I'll be, uh, about as old as Joe Biden and Donald Trump when it's finished, so, um, I'll be a lot older if I'm still around. Anyway, um, I just wanna say, uh, I'm glad, hopefully everybody voted today, there's still a half hour. I have my own election party tonight, which is gonna be in bed, watching TV with my phone next to me and eating fried chicken. So, uh, everybody enjoy your night, that's gonna be my night. Have a good evening.
All right. Um, I'm gonna just...
Can you follow that?
No, I can't follow that. I, I'm speechless, which doesn't happen often. So I'm gonna just leave it like that. Uh, everybody, please... Uh, everybody, please, uh, enjoy your time until we meet again. Uh, I'm gonna be gone on our November meeting. Mayor Protem Dros will sit in for me and take care of that.
That's scary.
But you'll rise to the occasion as you always do.
For everybody else.
Oh, for everybody else. Oh, that, wow. Okay. Well, they had a little practice for Halloween and now they're not gonna be scared of anything. Okay. Um, I'm glad to hear that the senior center event was so well-attended and all. I, I was unable to make it and, uh, I guess I've missed a lot of the fun things, but, uh, I'm looking forward to the film festival and we'll make a good show of that. So thank you, everybody. Uh, announcements, the next regular meeting of the Town of Yucca Valley's Town Council will be held on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the Yucca Valley Community Center Yucca Room. And with that, we are adjourned.